City Council Workshop to Order. Okay, I guess first briefing is going to be the United Way of Southampton Roads COVID-19 Funding Status Update with Michelle Anderson. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having us today. We are so honored to be here and just want to thank everyone on the City Council and City Manager Duhany for your support of our community. We continue to brag about Virginia Beach and lift Virginia Beach up across the country as a model for other communities to use. We're going to give you a brief report out from each of the four partners and then we were going to take questions at the end. We also have our program staff here for Virginia Beach relief if you have any specific questions of them also. And so, let's see. So, we have had over 70,000 people view the Virginia Beach Relief page. It takes about an average of two minutes to complete the form, so it is not taxing or complicated for anyone. We have sent a second direct mail piece since we've last seen you to over 175 households in Virginia Beach from ZIP codes that we received the most requests from. You can see here we continue to do multifaceted marketing to keep the word out as we know that people still have many needs in our community. This is a new, our data, some data learning points from the folks that are helped. You can see 46% are unemployed and you'll also see either have a loss or a decrease in wages, 62%. So, this runs down, 7.5% are veterans or military connected. I know you have all of this in your packet. There's also a map by ZIP code, so you can see where the requests are coming from. Referrals in need. The number one need continues to be utilities and utility bills for almost 4,000 requests. Second are requests to the food bank. And then third are housing utilities. And this will show you the decline to over 8,600 requests for assistance. Financial assistance. Of those almost 5,500 individuals who have requested assistance, they've had at least requests from one. We have many people that are requesting multiple requests. Again, you can see the biggest output of financial resources has been in housing. Our goal, and I know you know, it's so much easier to keep people in a house. If they do not have housing, people spiral out and it takes years to get people back on their feet. So, you'll see that here. You're helping to provide that throughout the community. Nonprofit grants. This was a new grant that we implemented at the last City Council or the last time we came before you to help nonprofits, just like we did for small businesses. And you can see our, through May 24th, we have had 137 unduplicated applications received. We made several changes after hearing from people when we opened the application. So, you can see the areas where we removed. And the goal was to make the awards available to more nonprofits in the community. And then we did add down an addendum on the bottom that you can read there. You'll see the primary use of funds that the nonprofits were using. We will be doing a second round of nonprofit grants. You can see here, or to give you a little bit of information, number one was under service populations were youth and children, families, and then you'll see people of, people or communities of color. I keep wanting to ask for questions, but I'm not going to. But we can absolutely go back. Yes?
Michelle, that chart on the left, the service populations, there's overlap there, right?
Yes.
I mean, they obviously add up to more than 100, so.
Yes, yes. This just gives you some of the highlights. And then on the mission focus, it shows you what type of nonprofits were requesting funds. So, on the mission focus, those that are focused on mental health was large, childcare was large. You can also see arts and culture.
That's a question too.
Yes.
So, the city has some nonprofits too, you know, different foundations and all of that. Were they allowed to apply?
Yes.
Do you know if any of them did?
We can get you the list of nonprofits that we funded. There were very few that we did not fund. So, if they met this criteria, they receive funding, but we can give that list to the city.
That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, and I'm going to put this back, so I don't steal Ruse Thunder. And again, we'll come back up for questions. Thank you.
Michelle, to clarify, Councilmember Wilson, were you talking about the city, Councilmember Wilson, were you talking, Councilmember, were you talking specifically about city-owned nonprofits or nonprofits within the city?
Nonprofit, well, city-owned, like, there's some different foundations, like the historical houses, the aquarium, the art foundation.
Library Foundation.
To my knowledge.
Library Foundation. There's quite a few, I mean, there's several.
All 501(c)(3).
Yeah, I mean, I would think, I would think they would qualify, but, you know, I wasn't sure.
They should qualify, and we can look that up while we're doing the presentation here. I'm sure someone on our team is looking that up, so we can check those while we're here today. And when I come back up, we'll hopefully have an answer for you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Wilson, to my knowledge, I don't think any city-controlled nonprofits applied for this funding. If they would have, they would have circled through our office to let us know, and we would have let council know if they were applying for those. So, I don't think any city-controlled nonprofits participated in requesting funding from these, from this grant money that council appropriated.
Well, maybe they can the second go-round.
I'm sorry, may I interrupt for just a moment of clarification? I'd like to know, what is the difference between a city-controlled nonprofit and, for example, is the Sandler Center Foundation a city-controlled nonprofit, or is that a, or the Library Foundation? I'm just trying to understand what's, what all these different categories mean and designations.
I'm thinking things like the, Councilmember Wilson, I'm thinking things like the Aquarium Foundation, the Parks and Rec Foundation, Library Foundation, those that have city staff that more or less coordinates their activities, you know, those organizations are the ones I'm thinking about, sir.
But they are, I might point out, City Manager, those are not controlled by the city. Those are controlled by boards of directors that are not, are, you know, volunteer individuals, just for the record.
And we will be having a second round of funding, so, you know, this is a first time that we've done this, so happy to modify anything that City Council would like us to modify. Okay? Dr. Ruth Nichols is going to talk to you about the food bank. Thank you. Yes, sir.
There'll be final questions for everybody. Welcome. How you doing?
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, members of the City Council and City Manager Duhany. I am Ruth Jones Nichols, the President and CEO of the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore. And I'm pleased to share with you an update about how we are addressing food security here in the city of Virginia Beach. With support from the Virginia Beach Pandemic Relief Partnership, we have been able to deliver on what we promised. We're not only closing the meal gap, but in the last five months, we've been able to increase the amount of food distributed here in the city of Virginia Beach by 30% when you look at the period from 2020 to 2021 compared to 2019 to 2020. A part of what we have done to close the meal gap is make infrastructure investments in our traditional feeding partners that operate food pantries, soup kitchens, and emergency shelters. That's in addition to the direct food distribution efforts that we have undertaken in partnership with other entities. In fact, when you look at the infrastructure investments that we've made in just three of our traditional feeding partners, what you see is that those partners are now distributing approximately 37% of the healthy nutritious food going to our neighbors here in Virginia Beach. So, there was an immediate return on investment for those partners and more importantly, for the individuals they serve. We've been so fortunate as well to collaborate with the Virginia Beach Department of Human Services, and many of you have heard about that collaboration. Through the Partnership DHS, we've distributed over 200,000 meals to just under 4,000 households, and that was at three mobile pantry events, beginning in November 2020, and the last one took place in April 2021. In partnership with DHS, we've been able to really look at what's happening with households who are showing up for those emergency food distributions. We found, for example, that just under 50% of them had never visited a food pantry or food bank emergency food distribution within the last 12 months. So, we are in fact, reaching the households that were intended to be served through this partnership. We're thankful for the investments that you've made to address food insecurity and ensure that our families experience food security. We've expanded partnerships with your support, partnerships with Mercy Chefs, Judeo-Christian Outreach Center, Penn Ministries, and even Access College Foundation, for example, have allowed us to reach families and individuals who are vulnerable and not necessarily eligible for some of the traditional federal nutrition programs, including SNAP, also known as food stamps. One thing that I'd like to talk to you about in this meeting, and we hope to share more with you in the coming month, is that we are going to be launching the 757 Mobile Market Program in partnership with the United Way and other organizations here, serving the city of Virginia Beach. This is an effort that will allow us to sustain the efforts that we have launched in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. With the 757 Mobile Market Program, we will be able to take seasonal fruits and vegetables, dairy, meat, and shelf-stable grocery items into communities closer to where individuals live or receive other services. That's important to note, because even though we are able to serve approximately 1,500 to 2,000 households at each one of the emergency food distributions in partnership with DHS, the reality is, people who are experiencing hunger and food insecurity need help a little bit more often. So, we thank you for making the investments in the food bank, so that we could make investments in our community partners, as well as the individuals who are facing hunger and experiencing food insecurity. I'll end by sharing with you one success story from a partner who had a distribution on Saturday. Initially, when this partner relaunched their food pantry in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, they saw an immediate increase from the number of households they were serving. They went from 80 households that they were serving in a week to over 400 households that they started serving in one day. We made infrastructure investments in that partner, so that they would be able to distribute more healthy nutritious charitable food. But they said to us, the families who are showing up are individuals who are not necessarily eligible for SNAP. In fact, this Saturday, only 10% of the households that showed up for assistance were receiving SNAP or indicated that they were eligible for SNAP based on their outreach to the traditional federal nutrition programs. Approximately 45% of those individuals were Hispanic or Filipino. 55% were white or black. That demonstrates that there are some disparities in hunger and food insecurity, even here in the city of Virginia Beach. But there was one gentleman who showed up. His name was Jeremiah. He's a service member. And so, he gets up, he goes to work, and he serves his community every day. But this past Saturday, he showed up at Eastern Shore Chapel for their food pantry, seeking assistance. He was able to get the help that he needed for himself and for his family. And for that, I thank you for investing in this partnership and investing in the food bank and the work we do every day in our community. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Through challenges, find opportunity, and you have done a magnificent job doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Mr. Duhany. Thank you so much for having me here today. I think I'm next. I am. Fantastic. I'm Christine Morris. I'm the Executive Director of List Hampton Roads, and we are the nonprofit that's administering the small business grants under the bbrelief.org pandemic partnership. And with your support, we've offered two rounds of grant applications and awards to small businesses located here in Virginia Beach. And the first round data is up here on the screen. 621 applications were received, and after we removed the duplicates, we vetted 557 unique applications for eligible grants. And again, remember eligibility was, had to be located in the city of Virginia Beach. The businesses had to have between 1 and 250 employees. Owner must be 18 years of age or older. The business has to hold a current Virginia Beach business license, and the business must have an active status in the Virginia State Commission's Corporation Commission's Clerks Database. And that's, the exception for that is if you're a sole proprietor, where you don't have to register. And so, you can see the primary purpose of the grantees that we awarded. 402 grants were payables and wages. And we were able to impact those areas that we target for, as a nonprofit, and those are businesses located in the low to moderate income tracks, women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, and veteran-owned businesses. And we had a broad range of impact across industry. You can see here the chart of how the businesses reported their main primary focus. And we also had a very nice geographic spread across the city by district. Each grantee is represented by a dot on that map. In April, we sent out a survey to the first 402 grantees, and we had 259 responses, which is a very good 64% response rate. And 96% of those grantees said the grant was very helpful or helpful in maintaining operations. 73 reported receiving some sources of other relief funds. And grantees found that support to be helpful across all the categories where we indicated that the grant should be used, wages, inventories, past due bills, payables, weatherization, and other operational costs. And I think the grant did exactly what you hoped it would do, in that it's helped stabilize businesses. The percentage of businesses reporting a declining workforce fell from 40% to 10% after having received the grant, and more than 30% reported increasing their workforce in April after they had received the grants in January. And then finally, we had a second round that we opened in March 22nd, and we closed the application period on April 9th. We received 627 applications. 489 unique applications met all the requirements. We randomly selected 376 finalists. Remember that you asked us to set aside $1 million for food service categories, which we did. And we are currently paying out those funds. 340 of the grantees have received their $10,000 grants. So, I'll take any questions at the end, and thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Abbott.
Thank you. Thank you for this great presentation and the work you all are doing. I had a question about the graphs you have there. When you separate out, are there, is there overlap in those demographics, or are they...
Yes, so, many of the women-owned businesses are also minority-owned businesses. Some may be located in those moderate.
And the same with the low income? Yeah, okay, I was just curious. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Mr. Moss.
Where, and I know Mr. Tower, Councilman Tower brought this up, but where we have this overlap, it would be nice to see a graph that was normalized and showed the discrete things exclusively, because I think when everything, the overlap, it, you don't get the granular insight that we as policymakers are looking for. That's the first thing we catch, you know, it doesn't add up to 100% at the bottom. So, it would be nice in the future, don't change anything you've done now, because that's just fine, but the next update would be nice to see it disaggregated, so the overlap was removed, and they were exclusive categories. That would be more helpful.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, thank you so much for the information that you've provided to us today. Particularly, I'm looking at the first round and second round business owners who did not qualify for the grant funding. Do you know, or have you, information documented on what were those disqualifying factors?
Yeah, so, the majority of them were, they didn't hold a business license in the city of Virginia Beach. So, that was the, that was the number one issue that we had. Secondly, if you're not a sole proprietor, but actually are an incorporated organization, we asked that you be active in the State Corporation Commission database, and we stated very clearly on the website how to do that and gave you plenty of time. It's generally like a $25 to $40 fee to become active. That way, we knew that you were still, you know, sort of a business in good standing. We had one other way to check it, and that way, we felt we didn't have to ask for a lot of documentation from the businesses themselves, because we found in other grant programs that we have done, that that can be a hindrance to some of the smaller businesses applying.
Great. Thank you for that information. I have another question. It's regarding the 757 mobile market.
Oh. I think, yeah, that's for you, Ruth. I think that's for Dr. Jones.
How are you today? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you for the work that you're doing in our community. Just really quick, I think this is a great idea, the 757 mobile market. Now, is, do you have partners who are working in the program? Or how does it work? Or do you just, how does it work? I'm interested in knowing.
Wonderful question. So, first and foremost, you can see here from the slide that this will be a vehicle that can go into neighborhoods to get healthy nutritious food closer to where individuals live or receive other services. And when the mobile market goes into neighborhoods or communities, it will stop at a location and individuals will be able to walk through the market and select their food, just as they would if they were going to a grocery store. We will partner with traditional and non-traditional organizations. We had a really great conversation, an initial conversation, a month or so ago with DHS about some of the potential sites that they might want to target. We'll partner with the, with the school district, Parks and Rec. We'll partner with our traditional faith-based organizations that operate food pantries and soup kitchens. But most importantly, what this mobile market is really going to be designed to do is target individuals who are in communities that have higher rates of food insecurity, because we know that those are the individuals who are oftentimes struggling to put food on their tables. We have been able to look at food insecurity rates down to the census tract level. So, we're not just looking at ZIP codes, we are looking at census tracts and identifying the neighborhoods or potential partners in those communities, so that we take the mobile market to the right places at the right time for the right people. I'll just add one more point very quickly. In Virginia Beach, the estimated number of food insecure individuals is just over 40,000, and we believe, according to the most recent numbers that we can access, that over 27,000 of those individuals are participating in or eligible for SNAP. So, that still leaves almost 13,000 individuals who are experiencing food insecurity. So, we'll combine the data points that we have in order to take the mobile market into the right places, but we've been able to launch this only because of the support provided by the city of Virginia Beach.
Wonderful. It sounds like an excellent program, and I know you'll continue to make a huge difference within our community with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
I love the idea of the mobile market going around. It'd be very visible, and it'll go to where the people are. I just think that's just a fabulous idea.
Thank you so much.
And I guess it'll be on a regular schedule, so people will know, like, on Wednesdays it's going to be here, and Fridays it'll be here, and then they'll know when to expect it.
We will publish the schedule, and this was one of the infrastructure investments that we wanted to make, so that we could sustain our efforts after the grant funding ended. So, we will operate them every single day here in the city of Virginia Beach. The food bank will operate one of the larger vehicles, and then one of our partners will operate the smaller vehicle that will serve the Lake Edwards and Bayside community.
Yeah, it's a fabulous idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Avery, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager, my name is Sean Avery. I'm the President and CEO of the Hampton Roads Workforce Council. We're your regional workforce development board, and we have the privilege of working in this partnership to help individuals get the long-term investment of training and get them the skills that they need to get back in the workforce. This program has been very successful for us, as well as your citizens. As you heard from the stats, 1,700 individuals requested employment insistence. Of those, 468 were interested in training. Of those 468 that we contacted, we contacted every one of them, 328 were actually, once we started talking to them, were actually interested in getting into a training program at that point in time. Many of the other ones really needed the other support services that our partners were offering, such as utility expenses, food insecurities, childcare, transportation. They have other things that we needed to deal with before they were ready to get into training, which we did help them get connected with as well. The Workforce Council has enrolled of those 328 individuals, 54 of them are doing on-the-job training, which means we're actually having them in the workforce. They have a job set ahead of time, and they're actually getting on-the-job training, working with the employer to make sure they're getting the skills that that employer is looking for. 266 of those participants were enrolled in classroom training at over 30 of our institutions here in the region, to include Norfolk State, Tidewater Community College, ECPI, ODU, Centura, Virginia Beach Adult Learning Center, and others. The average wage upon completion was $33,000 to $42,500, and we're working very closely with your Economic Development Department and other partners within the city to help place these individuals once they're completed their training. Most are still involved in their training at this point in time. The real secret to this success is really helping them get connected to other support services as they're going through these training. As we know, training is not always easy, even in the best-case world, but when you have to worry about childcare, and you have to worry about transportation, and you have to worry about the other issues that you have, that's where the Workforce Council comes in handy, where we can work with our partners, such as the food bank and United Way and Departments of Social Services and others within the community, to connect them up with the resources that they need to be successful. I just want to remind that this is really a long-term investment in your citizens. Training is one of those things that doesn't end once it's done. It actually can lead to career pathways and long-term opportunities within the job market, where you can move up the pipeline. We were not one of those that asked for additional funds in the last couple sessions, but we have fully obligated our training dollars for the individual. We do have a waiting list, and we do know that there's still individuals that are interested in training. So, in consultation with the city, we are requesting, if possible, an additional investment of 1.2 million to continue the program through December 31st, to enroll at a minimum 200 individuals. We do feel that that number will increase, as some training programs, as you can imagine, are less than others. And again, we do have a number of individuals that are already on the waiting list for this program, and we'd love to continue to work with them as well. With that said, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Moss?
Yes, Mr. Moss.
Questioning of all the people until we're there. I'm just asking, are we at the point now that we can ask all this? I see a nod in the audience.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll start with this gentleman, and I have questions for others as well. But I hope as part of your process, you're keeping longitudinal track, because obviously, training is an input.
Yes.
Job placement is the output. And so, I don't know if you have a schedule or a projection, as these people are in the training pipeline, where in that continuum is the job placement? I only mention that because we have a lot greater flexibility in our next allocation of funding. It's, you know, technically, you can get the four years over this program, but we also don't want to take people in that we can't get to the end. So, we have to be mindful of the front-end commitment can be... So, we have to be mindful of the front-end commitment can be executed across the job placement. So, when you, you come back the next time and get an update, I'd be interested in seeing how you're setting up that, what's that launch? So, when, when are the people like, we finished the academy, now we're getting the job?
Yep.
Because I think ultimately, it's the job placement where success is. And I'm very happy to see you're coordinating because childcare is a big barrier to people working today. So, I'm very happy to see that. And I'm sure that, that would be nice to know on this chart in the future, a matrix of the people that you have here. And then what other things that we are financing, the public is financing?
Sure.
Is those, we could see how integrated that is. Because, Mr. Mayor, I think probably across the country and I suspect, I don't know anyone who's doing this as well as Virginia Beach is.
I agree.
And I think it's a great story that we aren't probably telling enough about to brag on ourselves, so to speak, but we certainly deserve a pat on the back. But if I could, I would like to turn to the Food Bank, which is one of my most favorite things to talk about, only because I think no one in America should go hungry. I mean, no one in America should be going hungry. And, and I was glad that they made those capital investments because I do think this gets food out to where people need it. And, and I just wanted to share what a fabulous job that you all have done. You've exceeded whatever the expectations I might have thought I had when we went down this road of nonprofit delivery, which has just been great, a lot of innovation taking place. I just want to let you know that I have Sheriff Mr. Chandler, that this is something that we really need to continue to expand so that those people who make too much to get recurring help from the federal government but don't make enough to really not go hungry, that we can make sure that Virginia Beach, as I said, we have been using this windfall, deficit funded, but this windfall to really help our citizens on a daily basis improve their quality of life. And I don't think, and only the nonprofits could make it work. I did notice that you were using faith-based organizations to help you with your food delivery. And that takes me next to the nonprofit grant question because I have some questions there about why we are excluding faith-based organizations where the federal government does not. But I want to applaud you again for the great job your team and the community is doing to put, make sure our people aren't going hungry. And that's a great job. You should take great satisfaction and pride for that. I'm very happy for you.
Thank you, Councilman Moss.
But I would now like to address the why we exclude faith-based organizations from nonprofit grants when the federal government does not.
We didn't, they're included.
I thought that's, I thought that little thing said, when that slide said just to the contrary. I might have misread that. I know they can't do certain activities when they get a grant, but I read that to read that you weren't actually extending grants to faith-based organizations.
They just can't use that for religious purposes, but there are many, many that are religious-based.
Oh, that's good to hear. When I read that, I wanted to make-
We redid the wording on that because at first, it did sound like if you had any political affiliation or religious affiliation. And so, we took that out and just said the money can't be used for that purpose, but it can be used-
Oh, see, when you say removed, you mean you remove that requirement?
Right, let me, I'm trying to see. There it is, there it is.
Yep, I see it.
Okay, so we removed the application that it can't be controlled by a church or a secretary in society and also political or religious viewpoints. And then we added that they just can't be used for advocacy.
Okay, well, I think that's-
Does that make sense?
It does. I just didn't read it as closely as I should, so I apologize for asking the question.
Well, no, no, no. And it was, it was confusing and we had some, and it was changed, I think, the first week that we put the applications up so to make that clear. So, anything that you see, and please don't wait until we're here. If you see anything, let us know. To your point, we want to be flexible and innovative and help as many people with this opportunity as we can.
And, and I assume these, like with the Food Bank, they got some things that they were making capital investments, but then they were doing some other things that were called recurring services. So, are any of these grants being used to make capital investments of these organizations? Because those are the hardest things they usually don't have money for is capital expenditures so that when the federal gravy train, so to speak, ends, they have the underlying more expensive capital infrastructure that they can continue to service their communities?
There wasn't a restriction on the use. So, when we looked at that nonprofit, I'm trying to see if we can flip to that slide. We can show you the uses, but they certainly could use it. There you go. They certainly could, they're, that shows the service population. There was one that showed the uses.
Yeah, it had program, but that was kind of generic.
It was a pie chart. We'll, we'll find, we'll pull it up.
But to the city managers-
There we go.
To the city manager, I would suggest as we move forward with this program going forward, that these organizations might want to be thinking longer term after the money's over and it will be over at some point in time. Are they looking at taking advantage of their allocations to make those kind of capital investments they normally wouldn't have the money to do?
We absolutely could do that. And you know, another thing that Councilman Moss, you make me think of, is we can do, we do workshops and we could even do some workshops for nonprofits on how to effectively use the money. What are some things that they could invest in that will help them into the future when this funding is gone?
Because I do think that's a vision we have to have, knowing that it's, and in the end, we're not going to be able to backstop at a local tax rate, 136 of these $80 million allocations. We're not going to be able to sustain that level of funding. So, they need to be not thinking that that's a, that's a lifeline. It's a temporary opportunity to reset your baseline and energize your ability and take care of some liabilities so that you can move forward on a lesser operating budget.
Right, and I think that's one of the things we liked about this that really was inspired by city council is it's holistic. It's, it's got, you need your, like you said, you need your food. We call it Alice population. You make too, too much to get federal assistance, but not enough to make basic needs. And the job training is incredibly important to that, but you have to have the basics as a holistic. And you are fortunate to have a city manager who knows this language. And that's very helpful in partnering with the nonprofit community. There is one last slide. We don't have to talk about it, but I did, it, it does go to your point, which talks about what we're looking ahead as a partnership. And we are going to do surveys again to find out not if people are better off. And then we're trying to follow the families that we can to help them have that path forward. We are really concerned about June 30th, when evictions end. There's, there's going to be a moratorium that we are going to have a tsunami of eviction. So, we are meeting a lot and talking a lot about how to address this problem. But we just want you to know, we are thinking ahead as your nonprofit partner and looking at some of these areas that we expect to hit us in the next phase of this recovery. But we want to keep any questions that you might have. We did check on the city nonprofits. They are not excluded. Councilman Wilson, they are not excluded, any city connected. And we have had a few that apply, but we are going to look at that in a more, we are going to look at making sure those messages are getting out to the city-connected nonprofits for round two. So, we just want to make sure that every nonprofit is aware. So, thank you for mentioning that, but they are not excluded. And we have had several that received funding. Don't you love technology?
Okay, Mr. Moss.
Just one last comment, Mr. Mayor, because I mentioned this to Mr. Chandler, who the Food Bank and all those things come under his portfolio. And I know the social services department, our human resources has provided the volunteers that have staffed these monthly food things. And obviously, that takes them away from other things that they do. But under the American Rescue Plan Act, we actually could actually go out and hire people who are unemployed to help us work those, do have a two for one. They can be, have a job to be working. And we could also keep our human resources people doing service delivery while we have people doing logistics. And we could also even do contracting for that as well. So, I hope we look, as we have this larger tranche of funding, which none of us could have ever anticipated, that we look at taking some of the workload burden off of our organic staff who have volunteered and done a great job, but can continue to do their great city job every day. And we can go out and maybe reduce our unemployment rate and get other people involved in delivering the services. And I think that funding level would permit us to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions for anybody? I just want to thank the Fantastic Four for bringing this all together. I think the one thing we could all agree on, the city of Virginia Beach, you know, as a team, you know, with the council, with management, with staff and organizations like yourself came through the COVID, a lot better than we were expecting at this point last year. And we not only survived, we thrived in some ways, businesses opened, but it was the collaboration of you that really got into the communities and helped where it was most needed. So, once again, thanks again. And, you know, I can't tell you how much we're appreciated.
Right back at you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Director Smith from Human Services will provide a presentation to update council on the jail initiative where we provide treatment to individuals in the jail with the sheriff's department to help them recover from addiction. It's going to be a request for funding, not for this fiscal year or the upcoming fiscal year, but in the future, we're going to give you an update on the status of the program and to let you know what kind of, what the funding needs will be in the future.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council and City Manager, T. Juhany. Okay, so I'm, I'm Eileen Smith from the Human Services Department. And this is an update on the jail initiative program. Our sheriff is here with us today and he's going to come up in a few minutes also just to say a few words. Thank you. Chris? So, when we started this partnership, obviously, it was to just be collaborative, to prevent incarceration, reduce recidivism, promote healthy and crime-free lifestyles. We went many, many years ago into conversation about how do we do this best? We knew that there was a large population that was coming in and out of the jail that had mental health or substance use concerns. And so, we wanted to combat that in some way. And so, that's why we developed the partnership. So, we started back in 2014 or even 2013, really, talking about what we could do to elevate what we were doing in behavioral health and also brainstorm some solutions to the problem of having many, many individuals with mental health needs in the jail, coming in and out of the jail frequently. So, during the time period of 2015 to 2018, we actually tripled the number of individuals that we were working with in the jail. It says here without additional resources, but what we really did was took some vacant positions and moved them over to try to help with the services in the jail at that time because we had a couple vacant positions in another area of behavioral health. We developed a white paper in 2018. We had an executive summary that we wrote in, in 2018 as well. And by 2019, due to the efforts of our sheriff, we were really able to secure funding for a three-year grant program. And in November 1st, 2019, is when we launched this program. So, this really, really, I have to say, is in collaboration with the sheriff, but the sheriff did the heavy lift to get this funding. So, the grant that I'm referring to provides the, the funding for about 12 positions. There's three community-based crisis clinicians, one team leader who has been with us the whole time, six jail-based clinicians and two forensic peer specialists. We do have some vacancies in this area. We've had some vacancies over time during COVID. In the Human Services Department in general, we have a fair amount of vacancies right now. But we're building the team back up at this time and all of our other services as well. The funding also provided some startup expenses, computers, office equipment supplies, something like that. All right, so this is where we get to the meat and potatoes of what has occurred with this program. We screened 1,315 people. But that doesn't mean that everybody met the, the service threshold or the need for services. So, about 669 of those screened actually did come into our program. And now, we've seen where we've had some folks discharged. So, we wanted to give you the date on what happens when they're discharged, track them. And we've been tracking them at six-month and annual interval. And so, 97% of them have remained out of jail. 100% have had an adequate supply of medications upon release. 100% were, were linked to benefits such as our Medicaid, SSI and SNAP. 81% were released with housing. This is a big deal because if you don't have housing, then obviously you could become homeless or you are homeless and you will go back into the jail most likely. 80% were engaged in outpatient behavioral treatment and came to us for services. So, here's a little bit on the finances. This shows you FY 2022, FY 2023 and '24. '24 is what we're going to talk about in a minute. But you can see here that the three-year program will take us through 2022. Well, in 2023, we actually have enough carryover. And this is restricted funding. We keep it just for this program to fund that year, too. So, we'll be running it a fourth year based on some carryover from startup, a little bit slow in the first year and also a little bit of our vacancies that have happened in the last year. So, again, 2022 is approved in the governor's budget. 2023, we expect to fund out of carryover. And it's 2024 that is where the funding status is to be determined. At this time, I would like to ask the sheriff if he would like to come up? Oh, there you are. I thought you were in the back.
Welcome, Sheriff Staley.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I, I would say that this, this program has been a huge success and a greater success than I ever anticipated being. And I really appreciate Angie and Eileen because they, they've made it work. And, and you know, I think a lot of us come up with ideas, but these people made it work. And so, they're incredibly talented and I, I think that they can probably make anything work. But I, I think that there's good news in the future about this, too. I think that the Sheriff's Association thinks that this is a great program and they're going to try and get it to be a, a general assembly initiative. And, you know, that, so we can continue the funding as we go along. Because I think, you know, with, with cutting down on the, the centralized locations, mental health hospitals and going back to the community service boards, there's been a lot of people left out of, out in the cold and they've been, they've been finding themselves in the jail as the last result. And so, I think the state's got a responsibility to fund this as well. And, you know, I don't know if they're going to go into a partnership or what they'll do, but I think we'll find some funding from the state of Virginia on this as well. I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you all have.
Any question, Ms. Henley?
He looked here first. I, I really appreciate all that you all have done. And I know that you all have been working for a good, long while on a lot of collaboration with mental health and what goes on in the jail. I guess this is a lot of the crisis intervention teamwork when you have identified people who are coming into the jail who have mental health issues. Is this a part of it?
Well, yes, ma'am. All of our deputies are training, crisis intervention training now. And, but you know, that, that deals them, that helps them deal with the inmates when they're in jail, the mentally ill inmates in jail. But this, this is more of a continuous care, continuum of the care that they get while they come in jail because the, the health department evaluates them. They, they do the assessment now. And we, we can start treatment in the facility. And then when they get out of the facility, when I became sheriff, they got two days worth of medication, we're kicked out of the facility and that was all that we did. Now, we have a continuum of care where they have to, we have appointments set up for them. They get all the medicine that they need. They get housing, they're trying to get them housing, we're trying to get them all the things that they need to be successful. And that's why the, the, the success rate is so high. You know, I thought it was, I thought they were, they were kidding me when they told me that they had about a 93% success rate with this because the, the mentally ill in my jail had about a 92% recidivism rate. And I always refer to it as a death penalty when a mentally ill person came to jail because they were going to be in there, it's a revolving door. They just keep coming in and coming in and coming in. And so, I think, you know, it's really a fantastic program.
And so, I, I know one time that we talked, you talked about needing housing for them. So, this, this is the follow-up of, of what you were doing at that time. And, and I think that's what's so good. So, you're telling us that in about year four, we're going to be looking for some more funding, whether it's from the state or do you anticipate a, a local need?
I anticipate-
You'll take it anywhere.
I always anticipate there's a local need, yeah. And, and I think that, you know, what, what happens is the state is going to try and decide what they, they feel responsible for. And let me, let me just go back for a second. This thing kind of came about because I met with Creed Deeds. So, he's got, he's the head of the Creed, the Deeds Commission with the Mental Health Commission out of the state. And I met with him out in Suffolk about five, six years ago. And I said, Creed, are you going to fund mental health or not? And he said, no, we're not going to, the problem's too big. We can't figure out how to fund it. So, I went to Tommy Norman and Chris Jones, who were the chairman of the finance committees in the House and the Senate. And I said to them, look, if I come up with a program, can you fund it? And so, they said they'd fund it. So, I went to Eileen and Angie, we worked out this program and I took it up to them and then they funded it. And they, they acknowledged that they have a responsibility to fund it. And so, I think that's extremely important that you all realize that they acknowledge that they have a responsibility to fund it. Once you get, once you're in the funding stream, it's a lot easier to stay in there than it is to get out, get in it if, if you're not in the funding stream, as you all know. And so, I think that, I think the state has recognized that they got a responsibility and I don't think we can let them forget it. And so, I think, you know, it should be something that VML and VACO try to push. And so, I think, you know, it should be something that VML and VACO try to push this next year, because this is a solution that works right now.
Thank you very much. Y'all have done a great job.
Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? I tell you, I think it's a magnificent program. I think it's well-needed, overdue, and, you know, the COVID made things a lot worse, and we're responding. And, you know, once again, thank you for the initiative. It just shows what a heart and empathy Virginia Beach has. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Y'all have a nice afternoon.
And Sheriff, I got to apologize, Sheriff Staley, I got to apologize to you by almost running you over on the mayor's bicycle day the other day.
Yeah, I almost pulled you off your bicycle.
Yeah. I haven't been on a bike in 20 years, and they gave me an electric one, so I was in a, I didn't blink the whole way, so, you know. Hey, but thanks a lot, it was good seeing you, and have your folks participate.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Angela Hicks, Deputy Director from Human Services, will provide counsel an update on the Marcus legislation that recently passed in the General Assembly, and the pilot program that Virginia Beach will be a part of.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Council members, thank you. City Manager Tijani, thank you for having me today. I am very happy to have the opportunity to brief you today on the Marcus Alert legislation, as well as some of our existing crisis services, and also to let you know about some new crisis initiatives that are on our horizon. So, we're very excited about some of the opportunities heading our way. The Marcus Alert legislation will go into effect this year, and it will be a phased approach throughout the state through July of 2026. This is not an actual alert, like we might think of an Amber Alert. It's actually a set of protocols and minimum standards that are being mapped out by a state stakeholder group. As part of the phased approach, five localities were selected to move forward this year with the implementation of Marcus Alert, and I'm very proud to, to inform council that Virginia Beach is one of those first five. We are joined by Richmond, Rappahannock Rapidan, Highlands, and Prince William. Marcus Alert includes three main protocols that have to do with establishing a behavioral health response to a behavioral health crisis in our community, and trying to reduce law enforcement involvement in those crisis responses whenever it is safe to do so. It looks at establishing agreements between law enforcement and behavioral health providers, and it also looks at establishing protocol for specialized response when law enforcement does need to respond to a behavioral health crisis situation in our community. It's important also to emphasize that throughout all of these protocols and the expectations related to Marcus Alert, one of the things that we are all concerned about, and that is very important, is that equal access and opportunity to quality, dignified, and safe care is important for everyone, all Virginians, certainly every Virginia Beach citizen, regardless of race, ethnicity, or disability. Marcus Alert goals include increasing rapid access to care and treatment in dignified settings, as well as increasing awareness in our community about mental health needs and the resources that are available to assist them. We certainly want to decrease the use of force, arrests, incarceration, and hospitalizations. Our goal is to avoid institutionalization anytime we can. We want to divert people from arrest to treatment. And I should say that the, the earlier that we intervene, the better those odds are. Before moving into our new crisis services, it is important to highlight for council that we are well-stationed to take on some of these initiatives. I would garner to say more so than some other localities, because we already have a continuum of care in place for crisis services. We offer services that are a behavioral health-only response, and we also have services that partner with our law enforcement peers. We have the Pathway Center Residential Crisis Stabilization Program. We have mobile crisis intervention services for youth and adults. We have our CIT program that you're well aware of, and we also have the Mobile Co-Responder Team that we're very thankful for and partnered with the police to start in November of 2018. That team has been incredibly successful. They have responded to 27% of overall CIT calls for service, and they have been able to stabilize 83% of those individuals in a community setting without a need for a more restrictive measure. So, we're very proud of our, their success. The new requirements state that localities must offer crisis coverage in the form of either a community care team and/or a mobile crisis team. Only the community care team model allows for law enforcement to be a member of the team. To assist us with this implementation, the state has allocated $600,000 to each of the five initial sites. That funding will be used to cover the cost of a regional liaison position, as well as support our local operations plan. The timeline will show you some of the key milestones to be aware of, including the formation of a state stakeholder group that went into effect in January of this year. That stakeholder group must have a written plan provided to the Commissioner of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and Secretary Carey by July of this year. Also, by July of this year, the five initial sites are mandated to establish local stakeholder groups. I'm happy to inform you that we started our local group early in March of this year. By July, also, every locality in Virginia must have a voluntary database in place where residents can go in and provide information related to special needs and preferences that they would like first responders to be aware of, should they come to their home or respond to a, a crisis situation in their family. In Virginia Beach, we have SMART 911 in place that meets this legislative intent, and we do realize that we need to increase community awareness about that system. By December, the first five sites will go live, and by July, as I mentioned earlier, statewide implementation is required. In addition to the Marcus Alert opportunity, we will receive Step Virginia funding, and we will serve as a mobile crisis hub for both youth and adults. The two other hubs in our region will be Western Tidewater and Middle Peninsula Northern Neck CSB. As a regional hub, we will be expected to respond to crisis situations, not only in our great city, but also in Norfolk and Eastern Shore. Western Tidewater is the operating call center, and will dispatch the hubs whenever necessary to their assigned localities. If you're wondering how in the world will we respond in an hour to the Eastern Shore for a crisis, we wonder the same. I'll say that we will do the best we can, and this is actually just setting up infrastructure. This is not the end game, this is the beginning of trying to establish a regional cohesive network of crisis response for communities that may not have enough resources. So, it's a state plan to provide additional coverage, and also, they are looking at options to expand coverage by bringing in private providers and other strategies. So, I would just tell you, if you're wondering about that, it's, I don't believe it's the end game, but it's collecting data and learning from the experience. In the interest of time, I won't go into too much detail about the crisis hubs, but I would like to highlight for you that for both the children's and the adult crisis services, we will receive one-time startup funding and at an annual allocation of approximately $632 in state dollars to fund both teams. The actual total startup cost will be $835,000. So, we have researched this, and we'll be able to supplement that state funding with Medicaid revenue and existing local funds. So, we are not seeking any new funding for those. This level of funding will assist us with eight new crisis positions, equipment, and crisis services during peak hours. Moving forward, we will continue to be active participants in the state stakeholder group. We will facilitate our local stakeholder group that will lead us to a successful implementation by December in Virginia Beach. Deputy Chief William Dean is the co-facilitator, co-facilitator of that group with me. I think we have a diversity of people sitting on that stakeholder group. We have 23 stakeholders right now, and we, of course, have human services, police, we have the magistrate's office, we have a representative from Human Rights Commission, we have someone from the Office of Inclusion and Diversity in the public school system, and most importantly, we have people with lived experience with behavioral health, interactions with law enforcement, and they will be helping to inform our strategies moving forward. We have a sub-community, community, subcommittee of that group that will be helping us get strategies for additional community input moving forward. And, of course, we will be implementing the crisis hubs during the first quarter of Fiscal '22, and lastly, we'll be working with our friends at Immunities Emergency Communications Office to increase community awareness about SMART 911. Are there any questions?
That was excellent. Any questions? Okay, Ms. Henley, Mr. Moss.
Well, this, I think, is one of the best presentations we've had in a long time. I, I appreciate it so much, because I've been kind of saying, ever since we were talking about CARES funding and available having additional money, that I really believe that we have learned a lot about our behavior during this pandemic, just because of the individual experiences each of us have had, by maybe being isolated and so forth, that I think has caused us all to understand some of the issues that perhaps people in the jail have. But also, the fact that we just have, I think, become much more aware of, of some of these things that are going on in our, our community that we wonder about. And I know throughout all of this conversation we've been having about our, our public safety folks and, and the police reaction to various incidents, that, that a part of this has said, well, you know, we know we've heard, well, you need to defund the police and fund mental health. Well, we have funded our police, but now I think it's time to fund our mental health, because I think we can't, we have to do that as well, and I think these programs show that. You're talking about state funding, and that's great, and we know that the state and federal historically are supposed to be looking at the issues that have to do with mental health, but I don't think we should write it off as not being a local concern as well. I really think we need to put some effort here to make sure that, that there's success with these programs, and so, just my one person here on this council says, please don't hesitate to come let us know if you have additional needs. I know that Deputy Chief Dean's has been very, very concerned about this. I have heard such issues as that, not from him, but just in general, that if a, a police officer happens to be maybe at the hospital with someone who seems to have a mental health problem, that they have to stay there for a good, long time. It may be that there's something that we need to have other people qualified to do that, so that the police officers can get back on the street. I don't know, but I'm, I'm sure there are ways that we can all be much more aware of the work that you do, and this is where I think we really are going to be addressing a lot of our public safety issues, too. If we get to the root cause, and I think behavioral health is where a lot of it is, or behavioral, mental health issues that maybe we have not paid attention to quite enough in the past. So, I really hope you will keep us very much informed about how this project goes as it goes along, and let us know where the gaps are. And I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, it might be, as it is in so many times, that, you know, if there are gaps from state or federal programs, the locals pick it up. This is one I think we, just for the, the good of our, our people, we really need to make sure we make this kind of thing work. And I, I think this is very exciting, and I hope you'll keep us abreast of it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Moss.
My questions are addressing execution. We heard earlier about the number of vacancies in human services. How many of these new positions require a state license?
It's a combination. Some require a state license, other require, others require a number of years of experience and a bachelor's degree. So, we have both bachelor's and master's level positions.
Well, reason why I'm asking, because I'm sure that we haven't hired these positions yet, and so then, and I'm looking, I'm hearing across the board and across the state about the shortage of people that have the requisite experience relative to the demands positions being filled that are already funded. So, as you're looking at your assessment, when do you plan to post these jobs? Have you posted them already? You're actively recruiting? And what is your contingency plan to execute if you are experiencing the same kind of staffing issues that other agencies are experiencing? And I realize, I don't expect you to answer these today, but I'm sure these are questions that the city manager has probably already asked you, I suspect, because people have a, here at a briefing, they get an expectation, well, it's like getting the battery, but you don't have it charged up yet, the light can't come on. So, I'm looking at, you know, in terms of your execution down here, we just need to make sure that we're pacing in the community, the expectation that, because all this is people-delivered service, this isn't like you can call up and get one of those, all those phone trees that we hate, but, but a real person. So, I just hope that we're, that we could see, Mr. City Manager, really, what is that ramp up, and when really does, you know, initial capability start? Is that four months from now? And we expect to be at full operational capability, you know, in January? Because I think that's what people are going to be, I'm sure the Police Department would like to know, too, and us, I think this body would, is when are we really, you know, going to be able to bring all those people on board? And are we having issues with bringing those people on, on board? And we have, and we're looking for the city manager to come back and say what those issues are. So, I, I want your program to be successful, but I mean, that means you've got to have people on board, and I'm interested on how we're going to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Deborah Bryant's going to provide counsel with an update on the ARP funding as it relates to the legislation passed by the federal government, the restrictions, the timelines, the eligible uses, and also to provide an opportunity for counsel to give some feedback and some guidance in terms of where I would like the staff to prioritize, so we can work on putting together a plan for your further review and consideration at a later date.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. Let me get my first. Which one? Wait, did I throw it wrong? If it's not working, you can just advance it. Okay. Technical difficulty. Thank you. So, the purpose of this briefing today is really to outline to you, in supplementing all of the emails that I have sent to you, the American Rescue Plan and what that legislation looks like, the funding that we, as the city of Virginia Beach, are going to get from all the various sources, the timeline of how we're going to get those funds, and what the eligible uses are. So, today really is more of an overview and for you all to really understand what has come of the act, and at the end of the presentation, we'll just be asking for And at the end of the presentation, we'll just be asking for your guidance on priorities that you would like staff to start thinking about. Stressing, of course, we do have time. This is not something like the CARES Act where we only have till December thirty-first or anything like that. We have plenty of time. So we want to start this out and give you the information, and then we'll take it from there. Next slide, please. Okay, the legislative background on this, just as a, a kind of a framework, the House passed its version on February twenty-seventh, Senate was on the sixth. President Biden signed it into law in March eleventh. The American Rescue Plan Act, we hear many times, and then you'll, you may hear about the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund. The coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund is just a part of the American Rescue Plan Act. And that kind of confuses some people because there's many other things, many other things within the act, but this is specifically what we're going to talk about today, is just the things that affect us directly. The interim guidelines were released on May tenth, and even though they were in effect at that time, they weren't published in the federal register until just a week ago, Monday. So at this point now, they're actually published, and that means that the timeline starts. And so we have two months to give any comments. What that means is even though it is in effect now, it's an interim final rule, and we have several months until it becomes a final, final rule. So the good news about that is if there is anything that you all come up with during this time period that we look in the guidance and it doesn't look like we can do it, or we need clarification on it, we have the opportunity to go to the Treasury and give them our intention and to just be sure that that is a, a use that they can, you know, let us use or, or not. And in the first round of the comments, they were very amenable to anything that we asked. So we want to use that as an opportunity, also working together with VML and presenting kind of a united front on things that we need. And that's really how we got the, and you'll see, we've got, it started with water and sewer, and we were able to get stormwater specifically in there. Because this is federal, a lot of areas in our country, stormwater's not a big thing. So we had to educate them, especially Congressman Connolly's office, who was very, very helpful. And I'd also like to recognize today some important VIPs that we have. I guess, okay, from Congresswoman Luria's office, Dr. Charles Stubard was here and as well Karen Thomas. So they both have also been very, very helpful to us. The, also Congressman Connolly serves on the House Committee for Oversight and Reform, and so we got to really give some good input to him. And again, not only the stormwater was he able to get in there for us, but also the clarification that we got both the city and county allocations. So that was actually a very good, very good thing. Okay, by the numbers, I don't need to read these to you, but basically the most important ones to us, you'll see it's just large, large numbers. So there is a lot of money in this pot. The four-point-three billion that's going to Virginia, the state, for state-directed spending, that is a little bit different than, of course, ours. Seven-point-zero billion is going to Virginia as a state, and as you see, a hundred and thirty-six million, four-hundred-twenty-nine is going directly to Virginia Beach. Letitia Shelton, our Director of Finance, got a notice today from the Treasury that our request, because you actually have to request the money, it doesn't just come into your account, and she requested it, and we got verification today that it's on its way. So we should physically have, and, and you can change the, yeah, so, so this is kind of how the breakdown is. It's a hundred and thirty-six million, but it's in two halves, or tranches, as they've called them. The sixty-eight million is what she requested, that we will be getting as soon as several days. And then the next tranche, which is exactly the same amount, will be available this time next year. And even though we don't have to spend it right now, there's no harm in getting it in our account and start making some interest. Next, please. Okay, the, before I go to the key dates, let me just tell you that the city allocation, and you got this all in your emails, but just to, to refresh, we did get both the city and county allocation, which was a very good thing. There, any city that is over fifty thousand population, which ours was, we're getting that money directly from the Treasury. Any cities that were less than fifty thousand, that money is going to the state, and then the state has to administer it. So that's a little bit of a confusing point when people may say that the state's getting this money. Some of that is going directly to cities, but we're not within the scope of that. We've already got ours separately. The key dates, this is available, the money's available for any costs that were incurred after March third. We, the first tranche opened May tenth, second one's going to be May tenth next year. Both tranches of funds have to be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So we, we do have a good amount of time. And then the projects must be completed by twenty-twenty-six. We do not need to use all of our first tranche before we get the second tranche. So we can use part of it, we, we can hold on to all of it, whatever it is you want to do, but there's no, no problem in doing that. Okay, we have plenty of time. All right, next, the major categories of allowable use. So what we did is the ARPA set out basic categories of eligibility, and then the Treasury, when they came out with their interim rule, they expanded on that, and, which in many ways was a good thing, and they added a few more details, and they created some avenues for us to use. So we took all of those and classified them into five major categories based on the Treasury's guidance. And I'll go into each one on the following slide. So the direct response, which was directly to the public health emergency, premium pay, revenue loss, equity and investments, and then water, sewer, and broadband. Next. Okay, here's some examples for you. General government, these are for all under the direct response category. So for general government, we can use this for those items there, HVAC improvements, public safety. A new category, public, well, public health expenses, just like the CARES Act, but there's a new category, and as Mrs. Henley was, was talking about the behavioral health, they added in behavioral health care. And so they are stressing that because of the pandemic, because of the emergency, a lot of people have suffered in many ways in behavioral health issues, and they want our, our community health programs, now that we don't have to give that money to things like giving shots in arms, perhaps we could use it for more behavioral health care programs. The category itself is similar to what the CARES Act was. Most of the expenses that were eligible under the CARES Act are also eligible here. So if you used it for that, you can, we can use it for this. The expenses generally focus on the mitigation of medical expenses, although the new regulations take a more long-term view of medical expenses and community health, not just for directly using for, you know, say, people who've, who've, you know, been affected by COVID, but long-term uses that will help the community should there ever be another pandemic or something like that. As evidenced, and they specifically mentioned HVAC improvements for air quality in, in city buildings, things like that, and public spaces. The reimbursement of public safety and public health payroll costs are still eligible, as they were in the CARES Act, but they must be specifically responsive to the pandemic, which is very hard to justify, especially now that we're rid of the pandemic. Okay, next. Premium pay is available for all city workers, and grants to provide to the private sector are allowed for in-person, direct service providers. Basically, people who could not tell to work, who had to be at work during the past year, but all of those grants must be disclosed. I don't know how much that's going to really be, be useful to many, but the premium pay is allowed in addition to wages that a worker currently makes, and the employer cannot use it to cover costs. Okay, next. Revenue loss. This slide has a lot of information in it, and the revenue loss category basically was something that wasn't allowed under the CARES Fund, CARES Act, but it is allowed under the American Rescue Plan. And I will gloss over this slide, and if there's any questions at the end, I'm going to defer to my budget and management services people who are here because they can explain that to you much better than I can. Okay, the, the next category was equity investments. And what they were focusing on here are, one, this is an example of how the Treasury expanded the rules. And the intent of this category is not to just make people whole, but to build a better future for all of the people that mainly would be in these qualified census tracts. So we have the three qualified census tracts, and you can see we've got CTEC there, Green Run, Oceana. And that would be creation or expansion of current government services in those areas. Examples, childcare programs, removal of lead paint, community violence intervention programs, things that would make those communities especially vulnerable, other numerous housing options, such as affordable housing as well. Now, I'm going to put a little asterisk next to affordable housing, and the reason is because the Housing Department, as you'll see in another slide, Andy Friedman has already told me a lot of the money that they are receiving directly from HUD. So we don't, that's one of those things that we could certainly give some of our funds towards it, but they are already receiving a lot of money. And so instead of duplicating efforts, or, you know, maybe we could get a list of all of those and then utilize our funds in other places. Okay, next. Water, sewer, and broadband. Projects that are eligible, and, and basically what, what the tenor of all of this is, is projects that qualify under our state clean water and drinking water, state revolving funds, and the stormwater runoff control. So it, it's not just any water, sewer, it's not just any stormwater, but it is intended to upgrade current infrastructure really for long-term use. So when you talk about water and sewer, something that in the residents will be able to have a better quality of life. As far as stormwater, there's more stormwater drain off, so we, we won't have things like, you know, disease. Let's say there's another pandemic in, you know, water, something infiltrates our water system, to make our water system better, another pandemic that may be coming, you know, through our water system, or something that would prevent those things or make them better, protecting future health-related issues. I think they, the Treasury will let us, at least they've indicated, that they will let us do, I've explained to them, our specific stormwater issues, and they're all in sync with that, but they needed some sort of parameter to put in there. So I think that's one of the categories that if we want to use it for that, it would be good for us to kind of make sure it matches, and if it doesn't match, we'll go back to the Treasury and tell them what we need in there to make it match. Broadband is focusing on, of course, the underserved and unserved communities, as it usually does, but there is a lot more latitude in this. There's been a lot of money for broadband, not just at the local level, but also at the state level, and we may be able to utilize some of the funds from the state for that as well. So that's another area that we, we can explore. Additional considerations, the Commonwealth, as you know, is getting directly four-point-three billions. They have said that they're going to be using it for these items. As we know, they're going to have a special session that will take place in July, sometime in late July, early August, we're thinking, and during that special session, that's when the General Assembly will take all the money that they're getting and decide where they're going to put it. There, they will be appropriating the funds at that, at that point. But just to note, and I have a little star there next to public schools, these are the five areas where the state is saying they're going to deploy the funds. The public schools has its own separate funding. So in terms of when we do our allocations, we can certainly give to whomever we want, but both public schools, and then if you change the slide, please, and you'll see that our Housing Department is getting a lot of money in these areas. So the HUD funds that are going directly to Virginia Beach, to Andy, well, not to him personally, but you know what I mean, I always think of him as a person. He's getting three million dollars, almost four, for rental subsidies to, to give out to people for short term, and, and we had spoke earlier about the June thirtieth and lifting the emergency order, and there is going to be need for people who will be out, you know, they, they will need some money for, for those things. So I, I'm not sure how much that's going to cover it, but I'm sure Andy could give us that. And then also to develop new affordable housing. And then he also will be getting four hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars for emergency housing vouchers. So overall, our Housing Department will be getting that amount. So that's something to take into consideration when we look at what we're going to be giving out. And then rounding up to, just to kind of remind you all, this is kind of the mindset we're thinking of, we've, we've given you kind of the categories of allowable use, and we would like you to give us, whenever you, you are ready to do that, kind of percentages that you would like us to work on in different areas. You know, if you decide we should worry more about direct responses, or equity, or water, sewer, broadband, give us kind of an idea of what you would like us to go back and utilize this for, or bring back to you plans for what you, you foresee this would, would be about. Next steps, we're requesting your feedback. The other thing that we're going to be doing from now until they finish up at the state and decide what they're going to do, we're going to closely monitor the Commonwealth's allocation and prioritization process, and we're going to let you know so that we're not looking to fund something with our city money that the state is already going to be doing. Staff can research and develop the proposed plan for you all that you would, would like to see. And then also, there will be a public hearing that is necessary based on the level of funding that the city's going to receive. So, and that's something, if you have questions on, on what that looks like, again, budget can, can tell you about that, but because of the level of funding we're receiving, we had, we do have to have a public hearing, which, you know, so you can get public input, and of course, you can do any other thing that you would like to do. Are there any questions?
Questions? Mr. Rouse, Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, Deborah. Just have a couple notes, so just bear with me for a couple minutes. In addition to look, to looking at the ARP, American Rescue Plan, as an opportunity, opportunity to address or mitigate some of our stormwater needs, as part of the bond with random conversation that we're having, I'd be interested in exploring other means to finance the city stormwater infrastructure to ensure that city council has a full picture of all the options available to it. That's, that's one of my concerns I have. Another, one is that considering the impact of the COVID-nineteen has had to our park and recreation fund, I think council, I think we should take this opportunity to address the, the revenue loss. And that fund being that parks and recreation is an integral, integral service that our residents and children depend upon, and so I'd like to know what would it take to bring that, that fund back to its typical funding levels. Serving as the minority business council liaison, I think things are getting better for a lot of our businesses, but our small businesses, our small minority women, veteran-owned businesses are struggling to meet the pace of reopening. So I think we should use some of these resources to continue the, the flexible financial support that they need to meet the, the challenges associated with recovering from this pandemic. And certainly, but last but not least, I, I see that the eligible uses for the ARP is to support travel, tourism, and hospitality. And I'd like for the, the manager to report back to council if this could be used to support some of our festival events, such as the strawberry Punggol, the Punggol Strawberry Festival, that's been a staple within our community, the Neptune Festival as well that I'm happy to be a part of, something in the water that we like, hopefully can come back, the marathons and, and et cetera, that have suffered financially due to this pandemic. Seeing that that's ineligible use, I'd like to make sure that we can help these events recover financially, because I think it serves our community well, thinks it serves the better part of our culture and, and what Virginia Beach is all about, our diverse culture here in the city. And so that are, that are, that is some of the things that I'm looking at. Also, when it comes to the broadband expansion, I'm finding this serve communities, I'd like to know what type of funding could be used in conjunction with the authority and the broadband ring. I know Councilman Wilson is the liaison with, and so if Virginia Beach and all that the cities are receiving this type of funding, I'd like to know what would be the, the next step in ensuring that we can get the, the broadband ring connected and, and up in ensuring that we can get the broadband ring connected and up and going. Also, when it comes to housing affordability within our city, I know we have allocated certain vouchers to those who are looking for affordable housing, such as also Session 8 vouchers. So I'd like to understand if, how can we can help more in that aspect to make sure we can find more housing, and not just for those who are disadvantaged, but also for our workforce, finding workforce housing in ways that we can help out with that. Those are some of my priorities or concerns I have right now, and I'll be sending more to the city manager at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss and Mr. Wood.
At a later date, I would like the budget staff to provide us the actual calculation that's delineated on page 144 of the Treasury guidance, so we can actually see what the revenue loss is. And my follow-on question would be, is recoupment under that particular provision, which is on page 143 of the regulation, when we recoup that revenue loss, does that become totally fungible money, separate and independent of the overall regulations, or must that still be spent within the confines of the guidance? Because I'm hoping it's the former, which then would put that as a high premium, because its fungibility would be universal. So that would be important, because that would give us some ability to address some economic development issues, which I'm sure Mr. Adams would appreciate, and so would the taxpayers later. My other one gets to relative to one of the things our most constrained assets. This goes back to stormwater management, and whether or not, I know you said failures, but I would say that our initial big project that we have, Mr. City Manager, you know, is in some of our most affordable housing for working people in our city, which is Princess Anne Plaza, the lakes. So that system is failing, and their houses are flooding, but what that would allow us to do would, one, as Mr. Councilman Rouse noted, would one, reduce our debt requirement for stormwater, which is always good. Maybe it would find that $30 million Ms. Wooten is looking for, which would be nice. And secondly, would reduce the cost that we have to pass on the taxpayers. So a priority for me, since this is one-time money, Mr. Mayor, my fellow colleagues, is to the extent practical that we could buy down one-time capital expenses that we have to face, and that we could do, that would be very helpful. But I realize there's a balance there between trying to meet the financial assistance. That's why I'm very interested with the revenue formula that's on page 144, which basically allows you to use a 4.1% annual growth in revenues, which I don't think we experience. So I think there's some, but every little nickel we can get that's universal is great. I think I already expressed earlier the things that we can directly provide to residents, because that's, if you read through all these regulations, it's a lot of pages here, the thing that's repeated over and over and over is trying to help and put direct assistance in the hands of businesses and individuals who are disadvantaged, not disadvantaged by the pandemic itself, but that through this, people could lift themselves out of the economic circumstance that they're in. So I want, and certainly they talked a lot about childcare, so I want to make sure that we are looking at the barriers for people being financially successful, because this is one-time money, and I know we don't want to establish a recurring expectation that we can come up with $136 million. That's 22 cents in the tax base. I don't think we could choke that down. But I do think what we want to be at the end, and I think I also asked, is if we make an obligation to an organization that enters into a contract in '24, but yet it doesn't conclude until the end of '26, is that a permissible obligation? If it's a concrete deliverable, that we could extend the use of the money to the full length of the period under the Act, which is 2026? I hope maybe when you're talking with your friends up in Congress and Lori's office, make sure that at least there's a landing pad for that interpretation on obligation rates and expenditures would be very helpful in our flexibility to not have to disperse all the money at once, but spread that over the full four-year period and have a more sustaining effect. Because generally speaking, it is very difficult to effectively spend $136 million on services and do it well. It's another thing for capital investments, but rarely can organizations effectively execute and deliver with competence results that quickly. So it'd be nice to meter that out a little bit. That's just my observation. Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood, then Mr. Power, then Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. You know, I certainly agree that we should put some amount of funding towards parks and recreation, but I think also, in my opinion, there are a couple areas that are much more important, and going back towards flooding and sea level rise and things like that. I think we're still on a 90-year dredging cycle for lakes, is that not the case? Might put you on the spot there. And I think that's up from the 400-year cycle that we used to be on, so doing a great job, but I think we can probably do a little bit better on that, because that's something we consistently hear. And frankly, this impacts citizens in every single district, every single demographic you could possibly think of. People live on man-made lakes and things like that. It doesn't matter where the neighborhood is. And also, I think canal and ditch maintenance are things that we continually need more funding for, and I think that's kind of the low-hanging fruit that we can get done. I mean, I was just at the Civic League Thursday, and they were talking about their, you know, none of them are going to be alive when their lake is scheduled to be dredged. So I think it's something that we really need to take a look at, and that certainly is something that directly impacts our flooding and sea level rise. And I know it's hard for people to think about flooding now when we've been in a drought and it's not going to rain for a long time, but, I mean, it just takes one more bad storm like that, and people will be thinking about it again. But I really think that we've got specific projects that we know we need to do, and I don't think we need to go looking for stuff. I think we have unfunded projects that are extremely important, that impact everybody across the city, and we got $125 million in backlog in parks and recs, so, you know, maybe put a little bit of money towards that, but I really think we need to focus on major infrastructure, things like this lake and canal and ditch maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Tower.
I don't disagree with anything that's been said. In fact, I think the suggestions and observations that Councilman Rouse and Moss and Wood made are all excellent. I just would come back to the city manager endeavor and say, I assume you could, these are, I don't really mean this words, but I can't come up with anything else. Assume if given the opportunity, you could game the system, so to speak, not, I'm not talking about anything illegal or immoral, I'm just talking about letting us know where other sources of money exist, so that before we start getting into the specifics of this money, that we could see what we have from other state and federal sources, or at least what we anticipate, because it's very hard to say, well, we want to spend that much money, and then find out after that, well, we actually could get that from somewhere else. So it'd be very helpful to have that kind of matrix, I think, that shows us what we have. The other question I have is about, you know, we would have a public hearing for a budget of, what, about $2 billion? This is $136 million. It's not really needed, but I do wonder what plans or thoughts we have about public input on spending this money? Is it, it seems to be a substantial enough amount of money that at least inviting some kind of public input, even if it's not extensive, would be appropriate, and I'd certainly like to hear from people about that. My personal view is, I think, a mix of services and capital improvements is the right thing to do, and stormwater and the services directed to the people that are most in need, are neediest people, with hopefully some money left for some economic development projects which will produce future income that will continue to serve the city and be able to take on all of the things that we can't fund with this and our current budgets. Thanks.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Deborah. Excellent, excellent presentation, and there's a lot that's been said. I'd just like to add to what has been said. I think that when we had the, gosh, I was trying to remember, the money in the late 2008, 2009, there was money that was available for shovel-ready projects, and that's when we were in a very good spot, because we had shovel-ready projects. And I think that we could be in the same position this time with some of their stormwater projects that we have planned, because of the deadline and when the money has to be spent. So I think it'd be really helpful to us to identify where we could spend some of that money in the timeframe that it has to be spent. And like, I agree with Mr. Moss, that could free up some of our debt capacity and help us do some of the other projects that haven't gotten in the queue yet, or move the queue further along. So if we could identify those shovel-ready projects that would benefit from some of this funding, we can move that along. I would really appreciate it. And also, you and I talked on the phone about parks and rec, and it's not just the rec centers, but it's in our neighborhoods. We found out during the budget that we've got, I think there were 25 playgrounds behind, and then in the next short amount of time, there's going to be another 58 playgrounds that are going to come, that are going to need to be, and we're going to really be behind the curve following those. And I believe you told me, they would have to be targeted neighborhoods for this to be utilized. So if we can find out where we could use some of that money to target some of the more needy neighborhoods, this is in everybody's district and everybody's, in people's neighborhoods. So it's going to be really important, and I think it's not just the playgrounds, but there's shelters and different things that, you know, we talk about parks and rec, but there's a maintenance cost to these things, and if we can kind of get ahead of the curve ball on that. I will speak a little bit about the broadband network, where we are right now. There are RFPs that have been put out for us building it ourselves as an entity, and then also one was just put out this week for the private sector to do so. So that's going to all be evaluated. So with the, if we pay for it ourselves, there's a lot of questions that have to be figured out and answered, and there's been a committee to do that. If we pay for it ourselves, I told the group that we don't have the money in our CIP, and I can't come to the council to say how much we need without knowing what that number is. So it's going to have to be decided if we have a weighted plan of different cities spending different amounts, depending on the mileage and whatever it's going to cost per city. And the last number that I saw was 6.7 million for Virginia Beach and other cities paying less. Now with that, if they're going to weigh how much each locality pays, then we need to weigh other things, like weigh voting, weigh how much money comes back with the revenue sharing, that, you know, how much, if we're paying a larger amount of money, then we should get a larger amount of the revenue that comes in. So all that has to figure out, or do we have a plan where every locality is paying for it equally? So if there's five cities, then everybody pays a fair share of their 20%, and then everything is divided equally. So there's a committee that's been put together to look at that, to kind of figure out what each locality is going to come up with, if that's the route we take. So I'm not going to represent you without coming back to you and finding out as a council which direction all of you would like to take. I just kind of want to let you know, you know, where we are now. And I believe, Deborah, I don't know if you want to say anything about this, but you said there might be some other broadband money out there, kind of like what Mr. Tower was saying, there may be different pots of money also coming to affect some of these different needs. Did you want to say anything about that?
Well, there, and of course, we won't know until they meet and all that, but we know there's going to be money allocated specifically for broadband at the state level and through the body program, but also through, it's just going to look a little bit different. And we had a conversation about it throughout the state the other day. Alex Gotzchak, who is also one of our budget analysts, and I have to give him some props because he's been reading all of this stuff all the time. So there will be a lot of money for broadband, and so our first goal, to Mr. Tower's point, is definitely to see what we can get from the state funds, because this is a regional project.
Right. And we want to, you know, however we want to do this, we want, for all these different ways of spending money, we want to try to take advantage of it the best way we can, and to do a real broad look at everything and how it can all be divided up, and so we spend the money wisely. But there's, I did tell the committee, the Network Authority, that there's a lot of competing needs for this money, and we really need to get through this, but this is not going to be, decision's going to happen right away, but I just want to let the council know where the authority is in their discussions. So thank you for a great job.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Good afternoon, Attorney Bryan, and thank you for your report. And I would just like to, after listening to my colleagues here, I'd just like to say, certainly would like to ensure that the funds are spent in an equitable, in a fair manner throughout all that we have to focus on. And since it's been brought up about recreational services and a mention about the Centerville District Rec Center, certainly would like to see funding provided, what that looks like, how much could be allocated to that service, since it is a need for the community. And data shows that 70% of the households view recreational centers and services as number one, even when you look at all other departments within our city. I've also been contacted by our state delegation to say that that funding could possibly be used for recreational centers and a center in the Centerville District. So I'm very hopeful and hope as a body we can ensure that we are looking at fairness and equality over the entire city for needs for our city and our citizens. So thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I guess my question's to Mr. Dehaney. Do you have a list of prioritizations for the expenditure of this money?
Not at this particular moment. I was trying to get a general sense from the council of what areas they wanted us to prioritize before I went to the departments to let them try to come up with various different projects that they would like for us to bring forward to you for your review and consideration. But we could generate a list. I know the departments are anticipating an ability to bring something forward to us.
I think it'd be important for you to make some recommendations, at least, to us.
Yeah, I just wanted to make.
As to what you see, at least, as priorities for the expenditures of money. I see us talking here, and first thing you know, we're going to have so many things to spend it on, we're not going to be effective on anything. And I just want to make sure that we don't spread it so thin that we don't make something important happen, in other words. So I'd like for you, if you don't mind, to at least look at bringing us some kind of a recommendation.
I will do.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
I believe, Mr. Dehaney, you gave us a time last week when you were expecting to bring something forward for our potential bond referendum. That would probably be, what, sometime pretty soon?
June 8.
June 8, oh, wonderful, soon. Because I really think, you know, we have to know before we decide that we're going out and asking the people to increase their real estate tax to do the funding, we've got to, they're going to want to know how we spent this money, and so I think they kind of go together.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
Since there is another bill on the Hill for infrastructure itself, Mr. Dehaney, this might be a time to think of our operating budget in the same timeline as we do the CIP, because this is money that spreads over a number of years, to Councilman Jones's point. So we would have the budget year plus five. So we would have the budget year plus five. So we, so we could see how we are allocating these monies that are a multi-year obligation and to what purposes so that when we're looking at this, we have a, truly a holistic look because it's going to be some capital budget expenses that we're doing. And then we can show the public where that freed up debt service for whatever we did and that we could undertake this trade space. And so that we would know that we're not spreading it so thin that everyone can taste peanut butter, but everybody goes away hungry. So that would be a good thing. But I do think going to that six-year profile, then the two budgets would really align well. And they would, and they obviously wouldn't be appropriated except for the money that we get from the feds. But it would allow us to holistically look, Mr. Mayor, and see the full picture and would have the public know. And then we could get, are we, what are we getting for the value? I think what Mr. Jones was after at the end, you know, did we have a recurring dividend that gets paid from how we spent the money? And I would highly recommend that.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members of City Council, at this point, if it's okay, I'm going to adjourn for the meeting. I've been battling an ailment for a couple of days now. And it would be a good idea if I, you know, headed home. Okay, but thank you very much. And I turn this over to the most capable vice mayor. Thank you very much. And thank you all for a robust discussion today. And, you know, I think we covered a lot of very, very positive.
All right, Mr. Dehaney, it looks like we're about 30, 45 minutes behind schedule. So council, we're looking to, we were looking to start 15 minutes ago talking about short-term rentals. We still have all these planning, all these planning items to go through. What's the, will the council, what do you all want to do? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The planning items are going to come up for the next meeting.
Okay, all right. So we'll go through the planning items and then we'll, if we have any time left, we'll hit these because we really need to get to the short-term rental thing.
All right, so at this time, Kevin Kemp and Carolyn Smith from the Planning Department will provide council a glimpse of the future planning items that come before you.
All right, good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council. As we are crunching for time, I will make this quick as soon as the slideshow gets up. There we go. Carolyn and I will be briefing you on the items for the June 1st and June 15th agendas. On the June 1st agenda, nine out of the 10 items are for short-term rentals. Three districts are represented, or I'm sorry, four, the Beach, Lynnhaven, Bayside, and Princess Anne. The first item is the one item that is not a short-term rental. This is for a street closure of a 15-foot portion of an alley in the Crowtown Beach neighborhood. We have seen many applications like this before. The viewers met and have determined there is no public inconvenience. Staff and Planning Commission recommended approval on the consent agenda of this item. Short-term rentals, there are nine on this agenda, three in the Lynnhaven District, one in Bayside, and Princess Anne, and four in the Beach District. Of the nine applications, five were approved by staff and Planning Commission, three on the consent, four were approved by staff and denied by Planning Commission. Items two and three are short-term requests for a duplex in the Lynnhaven District. This is located on the corner of Atlantic and 88th, the last block before you get to Fort Story. Staff recommended approval. However, Planning Commission recommended denial with a vote of eight to zero. Their concerns were limited parking, removing a tree to add the parking, and that the property was acquired in 2018, but no conditional use permit was applied for. Each of the two units of the structure are two bedrooms. The proposed parking plan shows four spaces. Two of those are partially located in the right-of-way but do not block access. There was one letter of opposition. It is in an area of the city that is not being considered for, or is being considered for an overlay for short-term rentals. There are several registered in the area. It is registered and advertised, and zoning has not had any complaints. Item number four is a request for one duplex of a, two units in the Beach District. The site is in 400 block of Norfolk Avenue. Staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval with a vote of six to two. It was heard only because the owner only owned one duplex and they were concerned about the adverse impacts it may have on the other duplex owner. The unit is three bedrooms. All three parking spaces are on-site, one in a garage and two in the driveway. It is, the property is not registered or advertised at this time. It is in an area where there are numerous short-term rentals. However, it's not in an area that is being considered for an overlay district. Item five, the short-term rental request for a single-family home in the Lynnhaven District. The site is in the Shore Drive overlay, but not in an area proposed for one of the short-term rental overlays. Both staff and Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, and it was on the consent agenda. There was no opposition. The dwelling is three bedrooms and all three parking spaces are provided in the driveway. One is in the right-of-way. However, access is not blocked. It is in an area of the city where there are several short-term rentals registered, but a majority of the properties certainly are not short-term rentals. The property is not registered or advertised at this time. Item number six is a short-term rental request for one unit on a site that contains a mixture of uses. The site is in the OR District in an area where the proposed short-term rental overlay is being considered. Staff and Planning Commission recommended approval. And it got approval on an eight-to-nothing vote. Planning Commission heard this item only because of past fire repairs and making sure it all came, had the appropriate permits. The unit is a two-bedroom unit. It's located over retail space. Both parking spaces are provided on-site in designated spaces. It is in an area of the city where short-term rental use is common. The property is not currently registered or advertised, and no zoning violations were found. The seventh short-term rental request is for a duplex located on a site in the Bayside District, approximately four blocks from the Chesapeake Bay. Staff recommended approval of this item. Planning Commission, by a vote of four to four, recommended denial. The reason Planning Commission heard the item is that the owner only owns one side of the duplex. There was no opposition of this. The duplex is a two-bedroom unit. Both parking spaces are provided in the driveway in front of the unit. There are numerous short-term rentals in the surrounding area. But closer to the bay, the property is not registered or advertised, and no zoning violations were found. The eighth item is a short-term rental request for one unit in a 42-unit condo building. We've had several short-term rentals requests in this building. It is located in the OR District. Planning recommended approval on the consent agenda. Two-unit bed, or two-bedroom unit. Both spaces are provided on-site. And it is in an area where short-term rentals are common and in one of the proposed short-term rental overlay districts. The ninth item is a single-family home in the Princess Anne District. It is located in the Landstown Meadow neighborhood. Staff recommended approval. However, Planning Commission recommended denial by a vote of six to two. Their concerns were that it is not a good fit for the neighborhood and that there was a pool in the backyard which could lead to bad behavior. There was one in opposition at the hearing. The applicant did receive two letters of support and five of opposition. The home is a four-bedroom home with a large backyard and, as I mentioned, a swimming pool. The four spaces are provided in the driveway, two overhanging to the right-of-way. It is in an area where short-term rentals certainly are not common. The property is not registered or advertised at this time, and no zoning complaints were heard. The final item on this agenda is pretty much the same as item eight is for one unit in a 42-unit building. Planning Commission put this on the consent agenda and recommended approval. The two required parking spaces are on-site. And the same as item eight, it is in the OR short-term rental proposed overlay district. On the June 15th agenda, there are nine planning items. I will go through items one and two and then turn it over to Carolyn for the remainder. Item one is a text amendment to our sign ordinance. This makes our ordinance consistent with recent case law in regards to sign regulations being content neutral. What this amendment does is three things. Where our current ordinance prohibits billboards, this ordinance allows for off-site advertising but restricts those signs to the size limitations for whatever is permitted on that site for a freestanding sign. The second thing it does is it takes away the zoning administrator's ability to administratively approve the reduction of non-conforming signs and leaves its authority with City Council. And the third is in regards to digital signs. Digital signs will only be allowed in two instances. One is for major entertainment venues to which a conditional use permit is required, and you will dictate the number and size of the signs. And the second is for fuel prices for sites that dispense fuel. The second item is the item you will be having a workshop on today, and that is the proposed short-term rental ordinance, which I briefed last week. And now I will turn it over to Carolyn, and thank you.
Good afternoon. So moving forward with the remainder of the applications, number three is a request for a conditional use permit for a three-story self-storage facility along Centerville Turnpike. The climate-controlled facility is designed to appear more like an office building rather than a traditional mini warehouse structure. A deviation to the front yard setback is requested, and this will ensure a consistent alignment of buildings as well as an attractive streetscape along this section of Centerville Turnpike. This use generally generates far less traffic than what could be built hereby right, such as a mixed-use development or a commercial use. Parking is shared throughout the development, and it will remain above the minimum requirement. There is no known opposition, and this was one of the applications on Planning Commission's consent agenda. Item four is an application to remove nine legally non-conforming units of varying sizes that are along Norfolk Avenue at the oceanfront and replace them with eight townhouses. Three duplexes with up to six units could be constructed as a matter of right on these three parcels. As the applicant wishes to replace these nine residential units of varying sizes, which are non-conforming, with the eight townhouses, a modification to a non-conforming use is required. The three-story townhouses are depicted with a contemporary design and a primary vinyl exterior. The applicant did provide letters of support from the surrounding property owners. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with a vote of five to three. Item five is an application for a conditional use permit for a group home along Holland Road. This applicant is actually a Seaton house, of which most of you are likely familiar. They are proposing to relocate their housing facility that has been located for maybe 36 or so years in the Little Neck area to this location. Proposed are three structures, two of which will house up to 20 children. And then the third building will accommodate their administrative offices and meeting rooms. The applicant did mail an informational letter to the surrounding property owners that explained the details of their program. There was one speaker in opposition who noted concern related to introducing troubled youth into their neighborhood. Despite that, the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously for approval to the City Council. Item six is a request to modify the conditions of a previously approved street closure at 877 South Lynnhaven Road. The approval in 1984 required the establishment of both an emergency as well as a public utility easement to be established on this property. The current property owner contends that the development potential of the site is problematic as 60% of this property is encumbered by those easements. The viewers met and determined that the removal of that condition would be acceptable, subject to either the relocation or the abandonment of any city infrastructure within that easement area, and that that relocation or abandonment be approved by our public utility staff and that all of that work would be at the applicant's expense. It is anticipated that the property will be developed with a medical use, according to the applicant. So perhaps a dental office or a medical office. There was one letter of opposition from the adjacent property owner to the West, who interestingly was party to the street closure back in 1984. And he contends that the site, development of this site could negatively impact his property.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could, could you just provide us on our packet of votes? I'd like to see the historical record of what the analysis was in 1984 and what the presentations were so that we would have a narrative of how we came to this situation versus just a summary. Thank you.
Certainly. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval to the City Council. And the applicant did state publicly that they will continue to work with that adjacent property owner between Planning Commission and City Council to come to a resolution, hopefully. Items seven and eight are conditional use permits for in-home family daycare. Item seven is located in the Damneck Estates neighborhood, which is near General Booth Boulevard. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to care for up to 12 children in her single-family home. The rear and side yards are completely enclosed, and the typical conditions associated with in-home daycare are recommended. There is no known opposition, and this was a Planning Commission consent item. Item eight is also a request for the applicant to care for up to 12 children in her single-family home. This property is located in the Magic Hollow neighborhood, which is near Lynnhaven Parkway. Similarly, the rear and side yards are enclosed with six-foot-tall privacy fences. And again, the typical conditions are recommended. This applicant actually holds a conditional use permit for in-home daycare at her previous residence, which is in the western part of Virginia Beach. And she has done so without any incident. And she's in the process now of relocating into this home. So the conditional use permit runs with the land rather than with the applicant. So she is required to get a new conditional use permit. There is no known opposition, and that application was also on the consent agenda. Item nine, which is your last item for June 15th, was deferred by City Council on May 18th to this June 15th meeting. And just to quickly refresh your memory, this is a request for a group home in the Green Run neighborhood. The 5,800-square-foot two-story building is designed to house up to eight children who have been rescued from horrific trafficking situations. The two owners of the adjacent Montessori school did speak in opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing. Their concerns were related to the safety of their staff and their students should this group home operate at this location. The applicant has reported that they have met with the opposition, and they believe they have come to an agreement and resolved the issues. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously nine to zero to recommend approval. And that concludes the presentation.
Is there any questions from anybody? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next topic is the proposed changes to city zoning ordinance, short-term rentals. Was there a presentation, Mr. Manager, or this is just discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time Bobby Dehaney is prepared to provide a presentation to lead a discussion with council.
Okay. Come on up, Bobby. So we have a public hearing on this next week?
Yes, yes, sir, that is the plan.
And then the following week, or two weeks later, theoretically, there's a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, to save you the burden of going through the presentation that Kevin Kemp did last week, I'm here to help facilitate any discussion or go through the slides kind of quickly to allow you to go through anything that you had questions on. We did take notes noting some of the concerns that we have, but I'm unsure of how, Mr. Vice Mayor, how you would like to.
Let me start off then because it primarily impacts the Lynnhaven and Beach District because Bayside is basically pulled out now. So, Mr. Tower, did you have any comments?
I do. I just share with my colleagues that this has certainly been the issue that's most divisive issue probably since I've been on council. The, I won't, I won't go over today. I may, I reserve some time. The, I won't, I won't go over today. I may, I reserve some time during the public hearing so when the public is here and can hear and may be paying more attention than this. So I won't go through all the reasons why I feel the way I do, but I want to share with council members the bottom line of where I am now, noting that I keep an open mind. I'm not committed to this voting. I keep an open mind, especially to hear from you and to hear from the public next week, but I think it's only fair to give you and give the public that are listening today or may watch this at some point kind of where I am today. I've struggled with trying to find a reasonable, rational way to deal with this issue. There clearly, it's an issue that have two sides. The people that live in the neighborhoods who I feel frankly the highest duty to because they are our residents, they are our voters, they are, bought their houses with, in many cases with the expectation that the character of the neighborhood would last at least as long as they did. And some of those people have been disappointed already by the fact that short-term rentals have been allowed in their neighborhood. I wasn't around when the grandfathering decision was made. I'm not here to criticize it, but I do want to note that we have somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen or seventeen-hundred grandfathered units in the city in addition to the ones that we've granted by CUPs. The people in the neighborhood repeatedly tell me, I'm sure you see the same mail that I do, in many cases, I get some, a lot of personal ones, but there are enough that come to council that you all know that neighbors are concerned about the adverse impacts on their neighborhood. Some focused very heavily on the party aspects and the noise and the trash and the extra traffic that come from a lot of people gathering at one, but most really are more realistic in saying that's the occasional problem, and that can happen in a private home or a long-term rental as well. They are more concerned about the turnover of people. It is my feeling that enforcing a once-a-week rental is something that has had a very, most people are significantly mollified. They're not satisfied, I won't say that, but at least they are very much in favor of having once a week. They say that if we support short-term rentals, some people say at all, some people say beyond a certain number with a quota, that we're simply favoring investors over residents, that most of the investors who own STRs don't live in the neighborhood that the STR is in, many of them don't even live in Virginia Beach, a number of them don't even live in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And they're right. I think that's probably an accurate summary. On the other hand, I've gotten some of the most articulate, very reasonable, business-oriented letters about the benefits of STR to the city and how they, if we can manage them properly, that they are a great asset to the city and do not disturb the peaceful enjoyment of the neighborhood. And I'm sure that's true as well in many cases. So where does that leave me? I represent the Beach District, which includes most of the resort area. It goes up to about Forty-Eighth Street and down through Croatan. The, in trying to come up with a solution to the short-term rental issue, which we have now, just every home in the city is eligible for short-term rental, potentially we could be hearing CUPs for short-term rentals for now and forever. I wanted to come up with, if I could, with a contiguous area that was clearly delineated, which had a line, and if you're over the line, you're in it, and if you're not, you're not. Now, I realize this, if you look at a house in some of these neighborhoods, one house on one side of a line looks just like the house in the next block, on the next side of the line. But I think it is justified to have an area that is in the resort district that can't be argued that it's close to the ocean where people clearly come. That's the big attraction of Virginia Beach. And it is zoned currently, that is the OR district zone, it is zoned currently for the construction of hotels, assuming enough space to build a hotel. Can't build a hotel on any lot, but if you can put several lots together, you, it is, you can build a hotel right now without, as a matter of right, in my understanding. So that seemed to me to be an area, if we were going to add additional short-term rentals at this point in the Beach District, a way to protect the neighborhoods that surround that area, that are very close to, but do not consider themselves whatever we consider them to be, or whatever some neutral arbiter considers them to be in the resort area, they don't consider themselves to be in an area that should have short-term rentals, or if they are, they should be extremely limited with very tight regulations, but should be extremely limited in number. And I point out that a number of the CUPs we approved, and of course, a number of the grandfathers have been in these, in the same very sensitive areas surrounding the OR district in the central resort area. So my proposal was, and it continues to be, that short-term rentals going forward be restricted to the OR zone district. I don't know that this is the best long-term solution, but I think it is the best solution for now. We clearly don't have the regulatory capacity for, to add a lot of, a lot more homes. I think we've got to learn how to deal with the ones that we have better, make, and understand it. So I'm not saying a few years from now, maybe things will have changed and there will be a different situation, that there will be other areas or other systems that might be more suitable, but for now, I continue to believe that the OR district is the only area of the beach that I would propose going forward that we permit short-term rentals.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Henley. I didn't mean to overlook you because I know you've got in your district, Sandbridge, so if you wanted to add any comments?
Yes, well, just to ask Mr. Tower, before I make any due comments, are you saying that you want the OR district to be an overlay district or to require conditional use permits for any that we do allow there?
I would, I would permit them by, as a matter of right, if we can work out a satisfactory arrangement for, that they are professionally managed. That's, I was trying to just kind of stick with that.
And are you thinking for them to be, you mentioned that people tended to be okay with once-a-week rental. Are you thinking that they should be once a week there?
Yes.
Because I think the planning commission recommended twice a week.
I know that they did, but I would, I would be, stick with once a week.
Thank you.
Sure, just, oh, one other thing I wanted to say about that. I was a co-sponsor of the original ordinance that had the OR district in it. It also had Mr. Jones's and Mr. Wood's proposals in it, and I, and Mr. Jones already acted on his, Mr. Wood partially, and I'll certainly look forward to hearing what he's got to say about what's left of his district that he's still dealing with. But I, part of the ordinance was to suspend, to not have a renewal of the conditional use permits that we were granting during this period when, since we started giving them out again until we stopped giving them out again, or if we do. I don't myself find, think it's, on reflection, I would not support that particular piece of the legislation. I think, I think if we grant a conditional use permit and the operator operates it in a way that would make us want to renew their conditional use permit, i.e. they're not, they don't get complaints, they're operating within law, and that I would certainly not make them just flatly ineligible to be renewed.
Well, the issue, and so I guess what we're saying is that we're going to, and we'll still hear Mr. Wood, here, that we're going to approve perhaps two of these areas for ongoing short-term rentals, and for the rest of the city, we're not going to be allowing short-term rentals. Is that what we're saying? For instance, you know, like this one coming up next week in Winterbury, which is in Landstown Commons, that would not, that would no longer be something that we would take, okay, just so I'm clear. But with Sandbridge, of course, that area was granted the right to have short-term rentals by right by the general assembly. So that will stand because we can't do anything about Sandbridge. It will continue to have short-term rentals by right. But the regulations that we apply to short-term rentals will apply citywide. Is that correct? Okay. Just so, so I'm clear on that. So, short, so short-term rentals will continue to be allowed by right in Sandbridge, but they will comply with the regulations that we have all over the city. Okay, that, I think is an important point. But one thing that, you know, I guess I kept puzzling over from one of the questions we had last week was, you know, the question of complaints. And if we're going to continue to allow short-term rentals by conditional use permit any place, I guess the whole issue of, I guess one of the, I don't want to say the word threat, but I guess it is, one of the threats that we have to anybody is that if you don't operate your conditional use permit properly, you can have your short-term rental, your conditional use permit revoked. And I think in answering the question last week, whoever was answering the question, maybe Kevin, said, well, we might look differently at someone who just has a lot of complaints because they don't get trash out right, but if there were shots fired, it might be a more serious thought. And you know, that thing of shots fired is a real thing. In 2016, just as we were starting to talk about this whole thing, there was a young gentleman who was a student at Old Dominion who was shot and killed at a short-term rental. And so it's not something that we're just thinking about. But even this year, I believe the weekend, that March 26th event, another event that occurred down in the oceanfront at that roughly same time was shots fired at a short-term rental on one of the streets there. And since then, there was an instance when shots were fired at a conditional use permit short-term rental in Sandbridge. Those are just two that I know of this year. So how do we, how can we say to these short-term rental people that, you know, if you aren't careful enough to regulate who is going to be staying at your place, that you get in a situation where there's gunfire, that to me should be, right then and there, you're out. And I think that's been one of the real concerns about short-term rentals with people in neighborhoods not knowing who's going to be in that house. That seems to be the thing I hear people concerned about the most, that the turnover of different people and not knowing who they're going to get this weekend or this week. Is there any way that we can, can really clamp down on what happens at the house? I mean, if, and for years, at Sandbridge and North Virginia Beach too, you know, families came and enjoyed, and we never had complaints, but it's sort of when they got to be party houses, that's when the complaints started, and I think that's what people fear. It's not the family that comes to stay, but it's that it gets rented for a use of multiple people who maybe aren't related and are there there for other reasons. So do we have any recourse at all for saying that a certain, that at some point we say enough is enough, we're not going to renew your use permit?
So, Councilwoman Henley, the grandfathered conditional use permits and in the future those that obtain zoning permits have, there is a revocation policy or a procedure that's in Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals. So it requires, I believe it's a fifteen-day notification to the operator, and we would bring them back in front of city council with a report for revocation. So that would be the process that we have in place now. As far as doing anything sooner or quicker than that, I'm unaware of anything that's available to us.
So we wouldn't be able, for example, this one that, because I did, we did have calls because of everything that happened down at the oceanfront that night, that, you know, this also had occurred, and I think the neighbors were rightfully concerned. And is there, there's not anything that we can say to neighbors that, well, we're just not going to stand for it if we find that this is a place that's not regulated properly?
The ones that we've, the ones that you've related or referring to, those were all illegal operations.
I know, and so they can continue to...
Well, we've, for those, they have received their notices and have also received civil penalties for noncompliance, so we continue to work down the enforcement path that we can with those based on the construct that we have. So we don't just let them sit. We do, we are pushing forward with enforcement on each of those items as they continue. My understanding is for both of the instances, or at least the one in the north, in the north end, that person immediately pulled the property from any listing as we went back to research it after they received their first civil penalty. So we, again, using the tools that we have available to us, so we don't just let them sit, we are trying our best to continue to gain compliance.
Ms. Wilson, then Mr. Moss.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Tahan. So Bobby, down on the oceanfront, there's a couple of buildings that have been doing short-term rentals since the seventies, and that's the Edgewater and Dolphin Run, could be some others. And they're classified as condo hotels. So with that classification, would they fit into this, into these particular regulations because of the condo hotel? And it's really true. I mean, they have trouble getting financing, they can't get regular, they're not approved with Fannie Mae or with regular banks. They have to get special financing because of this particular classification. And I know, like they say, they've been doing short-term rentals since 1970.
So for those that had been previously operating, our hope was for them to come in and receive their registration or register their properties before July 2018. So we don't have it, as we've researched it and we've looked at it with the attorneys over that classification, it's not something, one that was called out in the zoning ordinance or something that we can translate. And that's the hard part for us, is that we're trying to translate it in a way, the easiest way for us would have been if anybody that was registered prior to 2018, when they had that window, was to register. so that we knew, okay, they were previously operating. I'm unsure if we can create...
I doubt they did, but I think, you know, maybe it needs to be something created for them because they're, I mean, they're in a totally, like Dolphin Run has 110 units. And most of the units only have one parking spot. There's no way they can create, there's no place to go, there's no place to build, you know, if they could afford it, another parking garage. And, you know, again, they've been doing this since the building was built. And a lot of those people, they rely, when they bought their places, they have to get special financing. It's, they can't get the low interest rate that anybody else can because of this special financing. I only know two places that they can get financing. So they rely on this to, you know, pay for their properties. So I think we need to really look at this classification called condo hotel because, as you know, it's considered, half of it is a hotel, which is a different classification than just residential properties. So if we can look into that, see how we carve that out. And Edgewater is the same way. Edgewater has one parking spot per unit, and they have something like 55 units. And there's no place to go. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
Thank you, I want to follow up on a point Mrs. Henley was drawing because we have certainly been educated that language that we've adopted, staffed by the Planning Commission and staff, has proven to be ambiguous and unenforceable in a court of law. So I want to make sure we're not repeating that bad experience and taking bad advice. So getting to her point, what you said about the tools available? Well, what tool do you need us to adopt such that certain violations constitute an automatic revocation that comes here automatically and we vote whether they continue it or not? If gun shooting at a location, you know, do we have to really, "Oh, here's your warning so you can have another gun shooting event at your location"? Why can't certain events be grounds for terminating your conditional use permit? I think that was the heart. There's some level of, it's like military, you take drugs, you're out of the military, you're not supposed to have second chance, you're done. So there ought to be a no-second-chance violations. What are those? They are so significant and represent such an affront to the community standards that you don't get a second chance. So therefore, there's a huge penalty, there's no "Mother Mai", "I'm sorry", "You're sorry, but you're out of the business". I think that's what she was after. So if that's a tool we can't adopt, that the city attorney says we can't adopt, and what's the basis for that adoption, that it would stand up in court, then we, then tell us the tools that we need to achieve the result that the community would, things we can do. Or tell us why that's not doable, and then maybe that makes us think about where short-term rentals should happen. Because I think, you know, gun violence at a short-term rental would certainly cause me to think that these people shouldn't be continuing to do short-term rentals, and certainly when there's fatality. So what rises to the occasion and how we communicate that? And my last comment is, and I know this probably isn't where the body is, but I know I communicated this earlier, I believe that short-term rentals that people secured on a conditional use permit, knowing that it only was for five years, if they're not in an overlay district, when their five years is up, I believe their short-term rental is up. They got the use that they knew that they got. They knew it was conditioned on a timeline with no promise to continue. But if we're going to have a policy about overlay districts, and that's where they should happen, then we should ultimately phase out those things. And then those communities have to decide whether or not they want a petition at a later date and ask to be a place where short-term rentals. But we shouldn't be saying that people are being denied something because they got the fully exercised the period for which they got to vote for. And I know I've had lots of emails from people saying, and it was even in that Realtor survey, that council is taking away a property right. But we all know, and we've heard it many times in this body, there is no, outside of Sandbridge, by the General Assembly, there is no property right to conduct an STR in a residential community. It's just not true. Now, maybe it should, and that's just what this debate's all about, but this council is not taking away something. This whole process is about granting a right, whether it's temporary, unconditional use permit for a period of time, or permanently on the overlay district, adding a right. But this process isn't taking something away for which people already had a legal entitlement to. And I think that often gets lost. Now, I know some people think it's my property, I should be able to do whatever I want with it, and I can understand that. There are places in the country like Houston with no zoning. But in this case, when people purchased their property, it was not a by-right use. So I just want to, you know, but, and I'm with Mr. Tower, what we do three years from now or four years from now, but right now, I think what I'm kind of hearing is in the right direction. I want to hear what the public has to say. But I'm, and they may convince me because I'm not final-final, but I am not inclined to basically grandfather the people that have conditional use permits in non-overlay districts at the expiration date.
Mr. Tower?
I was just, I was going to say, I think, and Mr. Morris is absolutely right, these are not property rights. There are, and I, it's not a ditch I necessarily am going to die in either. I want to hear from the rest of the council and others. I think it's a close call. I just think the CUPs that have been granted to people, they're, they may, if they have, they have invested, I would suggest most of those people have invested money with the expectation, not the right, but the expectation that they, if they operated according to law and paid their taxes and that they would be able to continue to do so absent some change to the whole neighborhood. We have already grandfathered 1,700. The number of CUPs that we will have issued before we make this change, assuming we make it in the very near future, is not significant, I don't think, in terms of the total population, either of the neighborhoods or the areas. And I simply think it's a choice we can make to meet the expectations of those people without materially interfering with the peaceful use of the neighborhoods by the neighbors because it depends upon their peaceful use of their property. And if they haven't done that, they won't get it renewed.
Okay, well, let me talk a little bit about my thoughts on this. First thing I would say is, and I certainly understand where Ms. Henley's coming from and everybody else regarding the bad behavior at some of these and the violent behavior. And I think, as Mr. Tahan has pointed out, this is primarily unregistered, illegal STRs, certainly irresponsible owners of these properties who are likely renting them outside of even typical booking sites. I don't know if you've researched that or not, Mr. Tahan. You know, I think the weekly rentals, professional management, that sort of thing may stop these issues. And I kind of remember, if you all remember, we had a guy that came here, and it was somewhere down in the southern part of the resort. And if you remember, his neighbors came in and said what a great guy he was, how nice he was, but they were all opposed to the STR because it was a little two-bedroom unit. They had 130 people in there for a party. And he was living, I think it was in Stanton, five hours, four and a half hours away, and he wasn't unable to respond. But you remember, the neighbors all thought he was a great guy. They had no opposition to it, but it was just the fact he wasn't managing it properly. And I think that's, I think that's something that we need to consider when we do this. Now, with respect to the areas within the Lineaven District, you know, I've met with multiple civic leagues, civic league associations, stakeholder groups and individuals and everything else. You know, I remain committed to, I think, wanting to remove the Eastern Shore Drive piece, which Mr. Tower referenced when he said, "What little remains of my district", which sounded a little ominous, but I know what you meant. I, we've all seen these emails from the north end, kind of an email pattern that has come through, form email. And if you look at what the north end civic league recommends, that's identical to what I've talked to them about, CUP for the north end. You know, they had added in a district, actually it's in your district, added in the Hollies, I didn't know if you wanted to pull that out. That was not in the original.
It was not, and on reflection, my decision was I would, for now, as my current position is, I'll stick with my original plan, which I know makes some people happy and some unhappy in the Hollies and in Groton and in other areas that are not included.
Okay. The other pieces of this, I agree with Mr. Tower on the administrative review of the CUPs and the ability to come back here. I understand that's not where Mr. Moss is and maybe others are. Mr. Stiles, I had a question for you, and I thought this was in there somewhere. Is there not a, if it goes for two years without being used, you lose the ability, or where was that?
I believe that was proposed through the Planning Commission, but I don't believe you adopted, is that...
Yeah, that was, that provision was recommended by the Planning Commission, I think with a five-year, but it was part of the old beach grouping of regulations that came forward that were continued indefinitely or deferred indefinitely. So that was never taken up by the council.
That's something that I think personally, I think we ought to take a look at because if it's not being used for two years, then it's not an operating STR. The other thing, and I've mentioned this to Mr. Tahan, too, is I think as part of the annual permitting process, and this, in my opinion, would be across citywide for the ones that are already permitted in other areas, as well as Sandbridge and every place else, is just a simple ledger system for people to submit when they pay their annual fee, just indicating how many rentals they had that year, the number of people they rented to, the occupancy, and then have the staff do a violation check on it. You know, just turn it in as an annual report. It's similar if you own commercial property, like office or retail space, you turn into the assessor every year a list of your rent roll and your tenants and square footage and things like that. So it's a fairly simple thing. And we're not, certainly not asking for anybody's, you know, proprietary secrets or anything. But I think that gives us an idea of whether or not, first off, you know, your software is capturing what it should capture, and it also allows people to self-report on that. Because I think, you know, I think the people who operate these as a business are wanting to do the right thing, and they want to make money without any problems, certainly without gunfire and things like that. I mean, I really think that we need to have a good way to determine what is a violation that requires an immediate reappearance before the council. And I think ultimately, if it's a problem like that, it needs to come back before the council, for the council to make that decision. But I think you all need to come back to us and tell us what tools you need on that. So that's basically, you know, where I am on this. And anybody else have any comments or questions or concerns? Aaron?
Mr. Tahan, I would just like to know, out of all the short-term rentals that's operated in the city, how many of those properties have had a violation? If you can give me that information, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, yes, sir.
Mr. Tower, may I have a clarifying question, please? You said the OR district, part of what was recommended by the Planning Commission was to include the RT zone properties. Are you removing that from that proposal?
That was not in the original proposal, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, no, I'm, my thinking is I want to go back to my original proposal, which limited, because, and the reason I'm doing that is because the RT properties, again, they contain some properties that are very similar to what you would find in housing within the OR, but they are not contiguous. They are in other neighborhoods, Lakewood, Pinewood, whatever. And I, so I'm just trying to stick to my principle of having a contiguous, connected community of short-term rentals.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Stiles, let me ask one more question, too. With respect to things like one car, you know, like the garage being allowed to be used for one space, weekly rentals and things like that, does that need to apply citywide, or can that apply in individual areas?
We had, we had sort of an overlap in that it doesn't have to apply citywide if you justify why it doesn't. And we tried to do that in the ordinances that were presented to you. The ones in the overlays are treated slightly differently on some of those aspects than the ones that are regulated under 242.2. So that is permissible if you do it right. And we hope we're doing it right, we believe we are.
Okay, thanks. Anybody have any other questions, comments? Anything else, not just thank you, Mr. Tahan? Anything else for the council? All right, we're adjourned. Five minutes early.